This is the March 26 meeting of the City Planning Commission. It's our regular meeting. Good evening, I am Chairman of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting. When we get to the site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. After the appellant's presentation, others may come in. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote in the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition or site plan. Recommendations on all petitions made by the Commissioner then forward to the City Council. Are there any questions? If there are none, the Secretary will call the roll.
Commissioner Bland.
Present.
Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Lamar.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Orange.
Excuse.
Commissioner Ossash.
Present.
Vivek Korn.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January 23, 2023 meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with any corrections.
Make a motion to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any corrections suggested by the Commissioner? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Chairman.
Yes.
I would suggest that we postpone the decision of Item B on the business agenda for staff to further review because there are a number of issues that have come up. And I feel as though we probably need to bring this back at the next meeting.
Should that be phrased as a motion to table it or postpone? I'm not sure which we need.
I think since the agenda is staff-created, this is just staff pulling an item for the agenda prior to its approval.
Okay, so...
Certain about is necessary.
This would be approval of the agenda as amended.
Approval of the agenda with staff's removal of Item B.
All right. Did we have a motion yet to approve the agenda?
No.
Okay.
We were waiting.
A motion to approve the agenda with the exception of Item B under new business.
So move more.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We are then on new business. First case is J-240770, a site plan review for a proposed pavilion restroom and playground for Hoyt Park. Is there anyone to present?
Good evening, Brian Keenan Leckel, Friends of Hoyt Park Board of Directors and address is 146 South Alexander and 48602. Here to talk today about some exciting improvements going on at Hoyt Park. If you've been by since about December, you've seen some improvements happening in the area of the Warming House, funded in part by ARPA contribution from the City of Saginaw as well as fundraising efforts of our board and our Director of the Board of Directors Larry Brethauer, who is also here this evening. The project and the plan tonight is an exciting next phase of improvements for Hoyt Park, funded or committed in part as a part of a legacy project for the Saginaw's Memorial Cup coming later this May. The addition of an open-air pavilion with a seating and of course a fireplace at Hoyt Park, kind of replicating one that was there before the Warming House was even built, with a potbelly stove in the center. I believe it was there until around 1940 or so. Close. Close, I'm close, all right. But again, the addition of this would provide for year-round usage, of course summertime activities, reunions, if there's a baseball tournament there and a team would like to reserve it, those types of activities, but also available just as first come, first served when not reserved and especially during those winter months as anytime there is snowfall, there are more than 50 folks and sometimes more than a few hundred down there sledding and enjoying the park. Although it is open air, there is a kind of a wind block in the center near the fireplace to provide some protection from the wind, again while providing folks that are out there recreating in the winter months, a little bit of break from bitter cold temperatures. The location of the pavilion, again as put into the plan, was selected based on obviously providing that joint use for sledding, but also it was shifted, you know, a little further south where you see it on the placement map, mainly because it would be highly visible from Diamonds Two and Three, where, which are some of our most active diamonds. So when there's ball tournaments going or kickball, things like that, oftentimes Two and Three, the diamonds furthest to the west in the park are utilized. So it would provide visual for folks that could observe baseball from it as well. I think, you know, I'm not sure, this is my first time in front of the Planning Commission, so if there's specific questions or we want to dig further into issues, but as submitted, I think that provides a bit of the background that went into the planning of this. I should also mention that Kibbie has designed and put together what you've seen today and what has gone out to bid.
I just wanted to further add that one of her biggest things when we were figuring out where to put this was, we don't want to give up anything that's there. We're just looking to increase on what's there. So what he did was, when I measured everything out, one of the big concerns was how far will the pavilion edge closest to the hill be? So put a couple sleds down, measured it back, on the one end of the pavilion to the sled, it's 18 feet, and on the other end, it's 20 feet. So that there's plenty of room for people to still congregate in front of the sled. And what we'll actually see, I think, is a lot of the people, because it's ground level, will be standing right in the pavilion, because there'll be a bit of a wind block from where the fireplace is. And it's a 65,000 BTU fireplace, so people will be able to get warm, stay longer, have more fun.
Would you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Larry Brethauer, and I'm on the board also, I'm the President of Friends of Hoyt Park.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else to speak on the presentation?
I'm sorry, what?
Anyone else to speak as presenter?
No.
Okay. Would anyone care to comment on the presentation?
This is not a public hearing.
Oh, I'm at the wrong spot, I'm sorry. Traditional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting?
Just need a motion to approve the site plan.
Oh, that's for a public hearing, I'm sorry. That's public hearing only. If that is the presentation, I would...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would move we take the matter off the usual order of business to have questions answered.
Is this the proper time for that?
You need to get it on the, you need to...
Our motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve the site plan.
So I will make a motion that we approve it subject to certain provisos, that the playground be placed above the infield's of playgrounds Two and Three and further provided that the construction for the pavilion and the bathroom be placed at least 20 feet beyond the north tip of the park island. And now I would like to move it, if only there's a second, I would like to move it to be removed from the usual order of business.
Separate motion?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. The motion is to approve with stipulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Faust. Okay. At this time...
Move to remove from the usual order of business?
Move to remove from the usual order of business?
Support.
Supported.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Recognizing Commissioner Clark.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Leckel, if you may, and certainly Mr. Brethauer if you'd like to. There has been concern expressed about the location of these two items potentially compromising the use as it currently exists of the sledding hill, correct?
That was brought to our attention, yes, I believe on Sunday.
And there was discussion about an alternate placement of each of the items, correct?
That's correct.
And one of the items that was talked about was removing the playground to an area directly above the playing field or the infield's for playground, or excuse me, for playing fields Two and Three, correct?
That's correct.
Now, would that certainly, or would that be accessible to the children and those that might use that as well, as good as the other place that you had proposed?
Specific to the playground, it should, shifting it to the south, it's a little narrower area, but that was kind of the concept, maybe when you think of playground, you might think of a 100 by 200-foot rectangle where this is more kind of linear pieces placed along the sidewalk that's there. So it is possible, but I also should mention that, I mentioned that we did take this project out to bid, which included playground grading and installation of equipment. However, in the last 60 days or so, since those plans went out to bid, the city has planned to submit a recreation passport grant specifically to fund the playground, which will free up funds to construct other amenities that we would like to get done as soon as possible. And it will essentially phase the playground into the future, likely next year at the earliest. So still time to, A, determine how much and if the grant is successful and how many, how much funds we have to construct the playground, and then of course the location there, if it were above Diamond Two and Three, we think that could still be adequate for the planned purpose if that answers it.
In fact, it'd be closer to where the parents watch the teams from, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, the second part is the bathroom and the pavilion themselves. Did the discussion include moving it approximately one building north so that it would make the sledding area more, keep it visible and keep it open? Is that something that your plans would be, would agree with?
It is, yes. I mean, in fact, in the early planning stages, we had six potential locations for that and the area you're describing is one. The reason it ended up shifting south was because it would be closer to Diamonds Two and Three with the potential of viewing that. Also moving it north, although not incredibly high, but it would increase cost. We'd have longer pathway stretches to run it there. If we do take gas from the building, which is being discussed, it'd be a longer run out to it to move it that 100 feet or so. And again, 100 feet of concrete sidewalk or asphalt sidewalk, we're, you know, talking tens or twenties of thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands.
What is the length anticipated for the pavilion?
48 by 32. 48 would be the width.
If you only moved the south...
Floyd, I want to interrupt you because I don't, this is not the power of the Planning Commission to dictate how a site plan is set up as long as it meets the zoning code.
We can have provisions though, all right?
Yes, but you...
What I would suggest however is that, so everybody is on the same page, we would need a new submittal of the site plan because that's the thing that gets finally approved and signed off on so that we can make sure that it's done correctly.
It seems by your motion and the provisos that you added to it, you're redesigning the entire site plan.
The questions I'm asking is whether they will concur with this. If they would concur, you don't need a new site plan.
But nobody else here knows what...
Yeah. That's where we're going. I've already made the motion, and that motion included those provisos, and they included moving it 20 feet approximately north of the island. Now, that's where I'm going with the next question, okay? Now, moving it about 20 feet north, the south boundary of the pavilion, about 20 feet north of the park island, would move it approximately one pavilion's length north, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So that would only be about 44 feet, not 100 feet, correct?
48, 48.
48, okay. So the width, the length of... The chairman was correct. The length of the pavilion. If we were to approve the motion as made with those provisos, would that be acceptable to you?
I think our, you know, main priority and even in discussions earlier this week were that we have gone out to bid, we've made adjustments to that bid to fit our budget, and we're optimistic that we can begin construction prior to the Memorial Cup as a portion of fundraising is being directed by individuals that are heavily involved in the Memorial Cup. To see action out there would be very exciting for them, and so that's one factor that if we do need to resubmit, you know, we're looking at 30 more days prior to award and construction.
Well, I'm not talking about resubmitting if we have the provisos. My question is, if the provisos were on the approval, would you, would that be satisfactory?
It would. I guess I'm just hearing differently from folks in the room. So that's why I brought that up, I guess, to share.
Well, we're making the motion. And if the motion is approved as made, would it be acceptable?
To shift it to the north, that 50-ish feet would be acceptable and not fundamentally change the look and design and the intention of the pavilion. And again, locating the playground a little further south, same concept, so yes.
That goes with, that's all I have. Thank you.
Does that...
Commissioner Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does that add to the expense juggling around from point to point?
There would be added expense shifting to the north in that it would, it would add 50 feet of walkway needed. So the location that Commissioner Clark is describing is further north where the approach at the curb has a steep decline. So you couldn't park directly in line with the pavilion and have an accessible pathway to the pavilion. You would need to park further to the south, get on a curb cut pathway, and then wind your way to the pavilion. So there would be, you know, relatively small, but in the probably 10-ish thousand-dollar range of additional cost.
And there'd be additional water line length and gas line?
Bingo. That's my question. So it is an added cost, and it's probably gonna be more than the 10?
The work is, it wouldn't, yeah, the work is bid at a unit cost, so it wouldn't be like we have to hire a contractor separately just to build this, which could really drive it up. I think that 10 to 20 range is probably a fair estimate. And we're talking about, in total with all of the other improvements, about $1.5 million. The pavilion itself, around $550.
I got a question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
Madam Attorney. I, I heard what Mr. Goen said, and I heard what Commissioner Clark said. Do we need to get another drawing with the corrections on it that we're asking about?
I mean, if you all have an understanding of what the proposed amended site plan looks like, then I believe that you can approve it based on that understanding. I would have questions for staff as to whether or not this also affects the grants. I don't know if the plan has already been submitted as is with regard to those grant applications, permitting. I know there's some floodplain and other permits that are at issue, so I don't know if that also requires other resubmissions for those.
So the pavilion does not require floodplain permit approval in terms of the grant, I don't think.
I don't think that's been submitted.
In past with the grants, they're somewhat flexible in terms of location on that, that we wouldn't be locked into that surveyed area, yeah.
And the upper ground was out of the flood?
Correct, yeah.
Right.
That's my concern. They have to come up with more money. We got these packages, and if we had concerns, we should have came earlier and talked about them and tried to get them to bring the right drawings in. I don't want to hold up production. So as long as you say it's not gonna hold it up, I'm in. But if it's gonna hold up, because now you gotta raise some more money, then this needs to be changed so that we can actually see it for ourselves. I mean, it's one thing for me to visualize, and it's another thing for me to try to figure out where I'm going. But I, what Floyd said made sense. But then, they've already got this done.
I would, if I may?
Yes.
As I understand it, Mr. Leckel, you do have draft or something that would give the members a better idea of what we're talking about, is that correct?
That's correct. In the early planning stages, we had multiple areas we were looking at, and it just so happens that one of the early areas is nearly exactly where you're describing.
Would you be able to produce that for the members?
I can't.
Thank you. I just need to see.
No, I agree.
The exception would be the playground in that drawing, but as I mentioned earlier, the playground is really still conceptual at this point, pending grant outcomes, money's fundraised. Friends of Hoyt Park has committed the grant match on that, up to $50,000 on a roughly $200,000 project. But again, with 25 construction, the playground located at the top of the hill, on top of the two diamonds, you can see they're shaded gray, but again, that is not sketched out in that drawing.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Yep. The playground, which is shown immediately south of the pavilion in the drawings that you were provided, in this map that is being sent, the pavilion location would be correct. However, the playground is not placed on that map that I just handed out. Only the pavilion in red would be the location in roughly 20 feet north of that center island as you can see.
I had mentioned earlier that where we have it plotted now, we were very concerned with people still having a staging area in front so they could still stand behind and have plenty of room, and that's why we did it with 18 and 20 feet between the tip of the pavilion to where they would sled, so there's still our room. And then you've got, I mean, it's a cement floor, a concrete floor. So we envisioned that a bunch of people would be actually standing inside the pavilion watching people sled, because then they don't have to stand in a foot of snow. I mean, why wouldn't you? Plus their butts would be pushed up to the fireplace and get more.
So just to be clear, in essence, this would have been approving a site plan for an item that is not being done at this time, the playground portion that is being withheld.
Planned for a future phase, or I guess would be a better way to describe it, but yes.
So, to be correct, we would just be approving the pavilion at this time?
No. Wouldn't they be approving like all of them?
Well, you could approve the playground as well, it's just that they wouldn't have to come back for any...
And the motion has considered that already, so...
Is the playground also something that the Commission decides on, or is that not even part of?
No, we decide on a site plan.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Really, I mean, that, both these items are more or less an accessory use, and I would say that the playground probably would not need to necessarily come back to the Planning Commission.
Just to clarify for everybody, the playground we're talking about would end up, you have the gray Two, the fields Two and Three?
Correct, right in the center of the hill.
And it would be right up in the center between the two of those up the hill.
Well, that was thought to be a playground site, but it is. Where we just, we just talked about what Floyd was asking was put approximately there right behind Two and Three.
This would be the back side, this would be Washington, January here.
This is a question for staff from me. Absent the pavilion, would the playground equipment need any site planning at all?
That's what I'm saying, I don't think that would be necessary. That'd probably be an administrative review.
Yeah, that's kind of what's confusing me, is really we're talking about where to put the pavilion.
Correct.
And the bathroom. Those are structures.
Correct.
Now, from what I see of the proposed playground equipment, I don't see anything that qualifies as a structure and has no utilities or anything.
Well, and I think these are just examples, they don't really have the playground fully planned out yet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So in essence, the red portion, it's a recommendation of what might happen, but it's the building.
Are you done speaking outside of the regular order?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if I need to ask Commissioner Clark.
Well, if you're not gonna discuss anything more with the audience, you could need to go back into regular agenda.
Does anyone else have anything out of regular order to ask the presenters? And I will entertain a motion to return to regular order of business.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So for Commissioner Clark's motion, would, would it be most correct to say contingent upon the following, using the...
I can review my motion.
Right, with this map in mind.
Move J-240770, provided that the playground be placed above the infield's.
Not saying where.
Okay, but that's, that was my point. The playground need not be included in the site plan?
But it's in the motion.
Well, yeah, it is in the presentation.
Above the infield's, of play fields Two and Three, and further provided that the construction be placed at least 20 feet beyond the north tip of the park island. Which the map that, or the diagram that's been provided shows that placement about 20 feet beyond the island.
If I may, you need to also add the contingency of the reown approval by the Engineering Department.
Right, that, yeah, I'm just thinking, is this, is it easiest to refer to the contingency of using the newly presented map as the location that we're approving? Is that our...
The motion you have is as worded by Floyd, that's been seconded, that's your motion, that's on the...
Okay, well, but we have this to refer to now. It looks like it corresponds with his motion. There are no dimensions to it. So, okay, I think we've got what you want.
What was your opinion approval of the, what?
As part of the recommendation, review and approval of the Engineering Department as well.
By review, by...
Yeah. Still has to meet Engineering Department guidelines.
And I'd just add that language.
Needs to be a motion to amend.
Oh, all right. So we, I move to amend, add the language exactly as stated, review and approval by the Engineering Department.
Support.
Support. All those in favor of that added language?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion as amended, including the review and approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe we have approved the site plan for J-240770.
The necessary changes.
Okay. We pulled the next agenda item, we are to agenda item C under new business, zoning 101, zoning audit, a presentation by Giffords Webster. Would the presenters come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. My name is Julia Upfall, I'm a senior planner at Giffords Webster, and I'm gonna be here with you guys for the duration of the zoning ordinance rewrite, and I'm really excited to meet you all. And I'm here with my colleague Andy.
Hello, Planning Commission, thanks for having us here today. I'm Andy Amott, I'm also a senior planner with Giffords Webster, and I'm happy to kick off this presentation.
Thank you for coming.
So our broad agenda for today will be doing a brief zoning 101 kind of educational presentation we give to all of the planning commissions that we work with when we do such zoning rewrite tasks. We, it's... such zoning rewrite tasks. We, it's not to say our commissions that we work with are not educated. We just like to start off with an educational session where we kind of give some 101s on zoning right away. Then we'll go into the zoning audit findings and the project scope of work that we will be undertaking with the city of Saginaw, and then we will want to open up a discussion with all of you. So, starting with zoning 101, and I want to just preface the fact that I am not an attorney. It's nice that City Attorney Lusk is here to help with any legal questions throughout a zoning process. But I'm here to just discuss some of the basics that we work with when we work with zoning law. So, how did we get to zoning today, in today's era? There's two main keys when we talk about property rights. Those are property interests and private property rights. I'm actually going to move on to the next slide, because I think it's a little bit more exciting. There's always been a little bit of a tension in our society in America about how the value of land can benefit the individual versus how the value of land can respond to the society's needs. Our founding fathers grappled with this for a while themselves in the late 17 and early 1800s. So, James Madison and John Adams were both kind of of the belief that the value of land shall benefit the individual first and foremost. On the other hand, Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson both believed that the value of land is how it can respond to society's needs and how the collective society can benefit because of it. And really, this has been kind of a point of contention, it seems like, in our society for, ever since then. We see it even up until today, how an individual can have their property rights, but at the same time, not affect the rights in the public welfare, health, and safety of the society as a whole. Broadly, there are constitutional limitations to the governmental powers of zoning in land use planning. So, really, the key amendments we work with here are the, are the fourth, or the fifth? Okay, on this side, cool. Are the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment guarantees. So, broadly, those amendments end up kind of crafting what due process, equal protection, and just compensation, aka takings, entail. So, the Fifth Amendment states that no person can be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. And then the Fourteenth Amendment says that the state shall not deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law. It also states that the state shall not deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws as well. Getting into the kind of the procedural due process part of zoning, zoning entails proper notice, proper hearings, and a record of the proceedings. Record keeping is very key when it comes to planning and zoning decisions, just making sure that, you know, the minutes document everything clearly, a file is kept on in the city for the record of the decision. And that's super important for the quasi judicial and administrative decisions that we're going to discuss in a moment. Two other parts of procedural due process mean that the legislative decisions are presumed valid, that the quasi judicial and administrative decisions must be based on specific facts and findings, making sure that you have a reasoning when you make a decision. Substantive due process deal ensures that regulations advance a legitimate governmental interest, that they are supported by a public health, safety, and welfare rationale. Takings are both kind of regulated by both the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution as well as the Michigan Constitution. Equal protection means that the right of all persons under like circumstances can enjoy equal protection and security in their life, their liberty, their property interests, and bear no greater burdens than are imposed on others under like circumstances. And in that context, every now and then, an ordinance is attacked because it might exempt a particular use or a particular site from the laws that apply to everybody else, essentially giving preferential treatment. It can also be attacked if it unreasonably restricts a class of use or a user. One of the main themes you see a lot in zoning is the free speech clause. So, that's obviously First Amendment, and that's implicated a lot of time in adult entertainment, which entails with freedom of speech and freedom of expression, demonstrations on public property, on private property, as well as signs and billboards. Obviously, that, signs and billboards have been regulated a lot recently and have kind of had parameters based on recent court cases. Freedom of religion is in that kind of same umbrella. It's very often, there's very often kind of contention or court cases that regulate how exactly a government can regulate religion. You can't give houses of worship of a certain kind preferential treatment than to another. There's been a lot done in making sure that freedom of religion is accounted for. The free exercise clause of that First Amendment broadly expands into the fact that regulation cannot burden a particular religious practice. There's our Lupa Act that covers religion, and then just making sure that best practice is making sure that houses of worship are similarly regulated as other assemblies. So, broadly, property rights in this country have never really been absolute. Even the, some of the founding fathers that were harsh individualists would not agree on that either. You've really never been able to do anything you want with your property at any time. And even, again, those strict individualists like Madison and Adams recognize that, you know, some of these key restraints have always existed. Moving into kind of how we've gotten here in the 20th century. So, before, a lot of land use regulation was tied to really nuisance law. So, you could kind of do what you want with your property, as long as it wasn't a nuisance. A lot of movement took place after the 1893 Chicago World's Fair. I don't know if anybody has ever read the book, The Devil in the White City. That's obviously a famous book that kind of is based on that event, the Chicago World's Fair, where all of a sudden, the American society really took interest in design and in regulations towards design and layout of uses, and kind of starting a dramatic change in the way our urban areas look and feel. That brings us to a really quick timeline. That was a very exciting period in terms of our nation's zoning. So, first, New York City adopted the country's first zoning ordinance in 1916. Michigan ended up adopting a zoning enabling act shortly after. Shortly after that, the U.S. Department of Commerce developed their own standard zoning enabling act for potentially other states to use. And the, one of the really important zoning court cases in the Supreme Court was the Euclid vs. Amber Reality case that essentially justified a local government's ability to zone by land uses. And that zoning by land use is a valid exercise of securing the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, that brings us kind of to today, where we're trying to operate zoning in a world that is a much different place today than it was back then. We have a lot of concerns in our best practices in planning and zoning. Vehicles have really, vehicles and sprawling land use practices and separation of uses have really started off kind of a dangerous trend in sprawl in our society. Really, back then, overcrowding in cities was kind of the first and foremost public health issue. Now, we've actually faced a pandemic, but at the same time, a lot of us have made it out of the pandemic, and we're now looking at ways to regulate our cities and our urban areas for good quality design that protects its population, and at the same time, makes an area ready for investment, redevelopment, and whatnot. So, I'm going to jump into really what is zoning. That looks really weird, I'm sorry. That didn't look that way in our draft of our presentation. But first of all, conventional zoning is a practice that it looks like the city of Saginaw engages in. The city of Saginaw also engages in form-based zoning as well, which I'm going to get to in a moment. But really, conventional zoning was a product of that Euclid and Ambler, Euclid vs. Ambler court case, where you could separate uses in a city based on different categories like commercial, industrial, and residential. There is a map that is then matched with text that creates corresponding regulations for the map. Rezoning review is a big part of that kind of conventional rezoning. It's changing the zoning classification of property on that map, really results in a new set of regulations for how a site can be used and designed. So, I'm just going to go through a few of kind of the standard zoning development procedures, for lack of a better word. Site plan review is, obviously, you had a couple of cases of that on your agenda, you know what that is. But it's just making sure that a site complies with the zoning ordinance standards. Special land use reviews, I assume you deal with those quite frequently, and that's just determining whether or not a particular use that has been deemed potentially less than ideal than a permitted use by right, but a use that has some unique or possible negative characteristics, how you make a decision on that use, making sure that it's compatible with the neighborhood, and will not be deemed hazardous or detrimental to the surrounding properties. And planned unit developments are obviously an option in terms of zoning development reviews. Those are really when a city takes on an application that might be a little different, might be a little bit more innovative, or a little bit more complex in terms of dealing with multiple different buildings, or multiple different uses, all on one site. They might result in maybe a higher density at one point in the property, but then conserve a little bit of open space. There's a lot that goes into planned unit development, but those are a very, very common type of review in a lot of communities. So, like I said, you do have a form-based code element to your zoning ordinance in our experience in looking at your ordinance. Really, it's about having a unique, straightforward relationship between the public property and the public, or the private property in the public realm, and how those two intersect. Here's some pictures of form-based code done right. So, you have, you know, some good, interesting design elements. You know, not everything's going to look the exact same, but at the same time, you do have that consistency along a streetscape. And you often have a lot of good amenities that serve the businesses, like trees, tree canopy, landscaping planners, potentially outdoor seating, good consistent signage. So, we do see that you have a form-based code, and we are excited to kind of work with it and see what kinds of little tweaks we can make to hopefully improve it. So, really, form-based codes, the broad intent of those are to potentially foster predictable built results, and, you know, using the physical form rather than just the separation of land uses as the key element. They're regulations, and they are a lot of times used as an alternative to the conventional zoning, but sometimes they do work hand in hand. Adding on to that, so standard zoning usually just regulates uses and really separates them, whereas the form-based codes can kind of try to create that sense of place and that mixture of uses while focusing a lot on the design and the form and the public realm, and how that public realm interacts with that private property form and building type. Standard zoning really focuses a lot on the lot, and whereas the form-based code really focuses a lot on really what you want to see in the future. Standard zoning usually references like landscaping, or parking, or access management in separate regulations, whereas the form-based code will sometimes do all of that built in, in a lot more fluid manner. And then typically, the standard zoning is text-based, whereas form-based is, you know, really visually oriented. So, as a lot of communities have kind of vowed to update their ordinances over time to make them a lot more readable, or user-friendly, or just more navigable, we as a company, Giffords Webster, has strived to do that as well. So, we, with our clear zoning format, we will try to clean up the ordinance in a more contemporary format that is as user-friendly and as intuitive as possible. Generally, our ordinance formats are divided into seven key subsections. The first one is purpose and intent, which deals with a lot of the legal language that makes an ordinance The next article is definitions, where we define all of the key terms in our ordinance, have some measurement definitions, have some visuals, really set the stage for really how the rest of the terms engage with one another. Then we'll have the Article III, which is zoning districts. That's, you know, your B1 district, or your R01 district, or your, even your form-based districts go in there too. Your AMU would go there as well. Use standards are really those specific set of standards that entail, or that a certain use entails, like, let's say, automotive, or an automobile drive-through establishment. You know, a certain set of standards where, you know, the menu board needs to be a certain distance from the property line, or needs to be lit a certain way, or your drive-through lane needs to be oriented a certain way. Those are those use standards. And then site standards are those things like landscaping, those physical tangible things you look at in a site plan and say, okay, I need 20 parking spaces here, or I need an 18-foot, that would be pretty small, 22-foot maneuvering lane. You know, those type of site standards are found in Article V. And then the Article VI regulates development procedures, so things like site plan review, special use review, planned unit development review. And then Article VII deals with administration and enforcement, which is a lot of the nonconforming text, zoning ordinance violation and enforcement text, in some of that day-to-day administration enforcement language. So, our general ordinance, clear zoning ordinances have like a spread, especially our zoning districts. Our zoning districts, in our opinion, operate in a really fluid and navigable way. We really have these two spreads with as much. We, we really have these two spreads with as much kind of information as possible without it being overwhelming. Sometimes I understand when you look at it the first time, it might look overwhelming, but really, this point is really the, I don't know, the nexus or the nucleus of the zoning ordinance, I suppose, where you start here, but you can get to like a handful of other pages relevant to potential development or a potential site solely based on starting in the zoning district. So you'll have like height measurements, you'll have the lot setback dimensions, but you'll also have information on, you'll be able to click on perhaps one of the special land uses that might have a set of use standards that entails, you know, those menu board dimensions, or those lighting dimensions with the drive-through establishment, and then also just the additional requirements that heavily deal with the site and how the site is built out. So moving into the zoning audit, it looks like our presentation picked up a different language as well somehow through its, through its transferring to the screen, so sorry about that. But Julia is here to present the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've been working on an audit report for you guys, although we haven't been here yet, and we'll have that to you in the next week. We're just reviewing all of the recommendations with staff before we present it to the Planning Commission. However, I wanted to take this opportunity to start talking about the audit with you and before you get the report, because it is a hefty report. So this is the agenda for the audit portion. We're going to talk about pretty much the sections of the clear zoning that Andy just went through. So we have the definitions, districts and uses, form-based districts, use standards, site standards, development procedures, and administration and enforcement. And I left it off, but we also are going to talk about master plan alignment, and that's where we're going to start. So the city recently adopted their 2022 master plan, and there's three key goals inside of the master plan. The first is develop strong and stable neighborhoods that are desirable and have a unique sense of place. There were several recommendations that had zoning, zoning changes associated with them, so we identified those in the audit, including consider new districts and district regulations that align with the future land use map, addressing zoning barriers, identify improvements, and offer additional flexibility, convert the ordinance into the clear zoning format or a user-friendly and easy-to-understand format, consider form-based sub-districts and building types for other areas in the city, eliminating the RMU district and maintaining the underlying sub-districts, reviewing zoning districts and considering the appropriate locations for new housing types, reviewing all zoning standards to consider walkability and vehicle dependency, and reviewing and updating the PDD regulations to enhance flexibility for residential development while protecting Saginaw's historic character. The second goal is to create a viable and attractive community, and the zoning changes that we identified there were converting the ordinance into the clear zoning format, reviewing and updating the uses, updating and clarifying the process for unlisted uses in the ordinance, considering boundaries of a new entertainment district overlay, reviewing and updating the PDD regulations, and reviewing the RMU district provisions and considering sub-district regulations and design standards. And then the third goal was providing adequate and cost-effective public services, and there weren't really any zoning changes that were associated with that goal in the master plan. So for definitions, we had some recommendations that we found in our audit. So first, clear and easy definitions are critical. One example that we like to use is for the term abutting. Most communities have some sort of term that they use to describe adjacency, but if it's not defined, it can be confusing when something is against a right of, or a right-of-way is an easy one, but maybe a rail line, or a body of water, or two lots, a budding in alley essentially, are those lots of budding or not? It's nice to have a definition to clarify that. Simple, clear graphics to illustrate the text. A great place where we use this is in the definition of lot, so you might want to see the difference between a corner lot and a through lot, things like that, so we'll have graphics to go along with that in the text. Differentiating between similar terms. For example, in the Saginaw ordinance, the definition of restaurant simply cross-references a drive-through, but obviously, a drive-through is distinctive from a restaurant, as a drive-through has an automobile component. Adding clarifications to address unusual situations. So for example, in the definition of building height, you might want to mention rooftop appurtenances or other things that may impact total height, including current terminology to be consistent with state law. So for example, family and group childcare are things that should be defined, as that's how they're defined under LARA, or the Licensing and Regulatory Agency. Consolidating definitions into a single section. So there's definitions all throughout the Saginaw zoning ordinance. When we do the clear zoning, those will all be in a single section in alphabetical order. One example of a section like that is in the solar energy system section, so it has a separate section of definitions, and we want to make sure those are all in one place. We do have a mechanism for putting like definitions together in that definition section, so it will be still intuitive and easy to find. When a term is mentioned, it should be defined, so an example of that is assembly halls. This is a use that's listed in the ordinance. We want to make sure that there's a definition for assembly halls. And, okay, there we go. So state agencies should be updated, so some of the state agency references in the definitions are outdated. For example, it references the Michigan Historical Center, which is now SHIPO, or the State Historic Preservation Office. Any new uses added to the ordinance should be defined. So for example, if we're talking about different missing middle uses, or other housing types that aren't currently in the ordinance, we want to make sure that we define those if we add them into the ordinance. And then we also identified some specific definitions in the audit that we look forward to hearing your feedback on, that we think may require additional review. As far as districts and uses go, as a part of the update, we're going to be working with a steering committee, and I'll talk about that more when I get into the scope. But as a part of the update, we plan to review all of the uses and districts and consider whether they align with the district intent established for the use. We're also going to update the zoning districts to align with the recommendations in the master plan, and we'll look at those future land use recommendations. So in the master plan, the Planning Commission designated future land uses for, for the city, which means it serves as a roadmap for future zoning decisions. Essentially, when a rezoning takes place, we can look to that future land use map to consider it's either consistent with the current zoning, or it's consistent with what we have planned out for the future. As we do a zoning ordinance update, we have the opportunity to consider, without rezoning people's properties, what changes to maybe the intent or the classification of the district is needed, and then even further, where are the rezonings that are desired in order to align the current zoning closer with what is in that future land use map? The future land use, or the master plan also includes a zoning plan, which outlines all of the existing districts and aligns them with those future land use designations. In the master plan, there were four districts that are considered new districts that don't directly correspond with any of the zoning districts, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. We do have recommendations for all of the zoning districts. For the residential districts, we, I flipped ahead. So for the residential districts, we have some recommendations for how, for the treatment of places of worship to follow, be consistent with Aralupa, as Andy mentioned. And we also recommend consolidating R1 and R1A, which was as done in the future land use map. Those two districts are essentially the same in terms of uses, have a slightly different intent, but are regulated pretty much the same, so it would be more effective if they were consolidated. As far as multiple family districts, we'll look at more missing middle opportunities and more transitional, missing middle, so it's not such a big jump from single-family to high-rises. For the non-residential districts, in the office district, right now, professional office is actually listed as a special land use in that district, so I think we can consider whether that's consistent with the district intent, and whether it should be changed to a permitted land use. Other considerations for this district, we recommend perhaps looking at the name of the district. There's many different uses and not just office in the district, and as demand for office in the market has continued to decline, a different name for the district might help market opportunities and make it more attractive for all of the uses that are allowed and permitted within that district. As far as the business districts go, for the same reason as R1 and R1A, we recommend consolidating B1 and B1A. In addition, B3 is no longer on the zoning map, but the regulations are still in the text, so we recommend removing that from the text. And in the permitted use lists, it recommends, you know, all of the following uses, similar uses to the above, essentially, for each of the districts, but it doesn't really give guidance on how to evaluate if something's similar to the above. And I think both of us have encountered controversies where one person thinks a use is similar and one does not, so having some sort of review standard or guidance for determining uses similar to the above would help provide greater clarity and direction in those instances. As far as industrial goes, we recommend permitting research and development uses, looking into renewable energy, and considering compatibility of all of the uses in your industrial with the district and district intent and other uses there. As far as the new districts proposed, these were the four new zoning, new future land use districts, I did not say zoning at the top there, I apologize, that were recommended in the master plan. The first one is the neighborhood opportunity area. This is looking for traditional neighborhoods next to employment centers. The zoning, the district should help cater to new redevelopment opportunities using historic overlays to preserve existing while allowing for a missing middle and additional flexibility. This could be a part of the expansion of the form-based code. And one thing to consider is that this designation was given to the Saginaw Raceway, but the scale of that site is much larger than the scale of other sites within that district, so just consider the potential for a larger redevelopment at that location. For neighborhood commercial, it's mostly west of the Saginaw River, smaller neighborhood commercial feel. We want to be careful about the consideration of the uses and compatibility of the intent, making sure that they're really those neighborhood-focused commercial uses, and they won't be incompatible with surrounding residential. The urban entry area is intended to serve as more of a transitional area adjacent to industrial, and again, we want to be careful when considering compatibility and the uses adjacent to residential areas. And the rural opportunity area, this was unique, it's only assigned to a small parcel, a consumer's energy-owned parcel, I believe, and it, we want to distinguish exactly what the goal of that area is from the parks and open space designation, or consider consolidating them into a single district. So it's at the very south there, is that like bright green, right? And the, yes, yeah, just that one parcel. So the PDD district, so that's your planned unit development district, that flexible zoning tool. We recommend a new statement of intent that captures the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which talks about flexibility in regulation, innovation, and design. We recommend updating the PDD regulations to align with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which asks to include eligibility conditions and requirements and standards upon which applicants will be reviewed and granted approval. This is important because it allows the city to ensure that a community benefit is derived when working on these projects, and it also helps an applicant understand whether or not they're eligible to apply for this type of zoning flexibility. The review, right now, the way that the PDD district is written, it's a little bit more rigid than most planned unit development district standards, it's a little bit more, less flexibility than others may grant, and we can review that and consider whether additional flexibility is appropriate if there's review standards and eligibility requirements in place to serve as those functional guardrails and ensure that the planning doesn't go too far astray from the city's goals, intent, and master plan vision. So moving into the form-based code, so we, as a part of the zoning ordinance update, we plan to review the building types, review the sub-districts, and review the requirements within each sub-district, and review design standards, and review the use categories. I have many specific recommendations in the zoning ordinance audit to go along with those. I think some of the notable ones are considering additional building types. One that stood out was single-story commercial. There is the building type for a drive-through use, which is allowed in a single-story commercial structure, but there's no standalone single-story commercial in that RMU district. They have a mixed-use building type, and it's unclear if that means that it has to be commercial with office and commercial with residential, or if it could just be a shopping center, essentially, a mix of uses. So I think that needs to be clarified. Some of the design standards, we feel would also apply well in other districts, and may not only be form-based code design standards, so we encourage the Planning Commission to explore the applicability of those and consider whether the improvements could be applied to other areas of the ordinance. And as far as the uses in the riverfront mixed-use district go, they're, they're very broad use categories, as they should be in a form-based code. We just recommend making sure that all the things desired in that RMU district are captured. For example, churches and places of worship didn't seem to be clear which, which of the sub-districts they would be permitted in under the use categories provided. The use standards. So we recommend considering use standards for any new uses. So when we adopt a new use, what are those buffering strategies, other setbacks, additional design requirements, things like that, that are important to accommodate that use and ensure that it's complementary to the surrounding area? We want to look at the buffering strategies for different uses. One example there is outdoor storage, so consider whether additional screening, fences, birmingham, et cetera, are needed. Consolidating use standards, so right now, there's a lot of the use standards in your general provisions, and a lot of the use standards in the site design standards for permitted uses and uses after special approval section. The way this, the latter section is formatted, it has kind of different, it goes through buffering, zoning districts, maybe four different qualifications of the use standard, but a lot of them only have standards under the other in that column. So consolidating both sections and maybe eliminating that kind of organization will improve that section of the ordinance. Similar uses may be combined into broad categories. There's two uses that really describe contractors' yards with outdoor storage, so those might be combined into one more clear use category. They also have very long, unique names. I meant to highlight them in the audit when I came up here, but doing something in a simple name such as contractor's yard with outdoor storage will ensure that it's easy to find when somebody goes to look it up and understand what use type they're talking about. We want to make sure that use regulations don't exclude the form-based districts, so in that section where they talk about the districts where the use standards apply, it's not talking about any use standards for, for uses in the form-based district. However, some of the use standards are things like cocktails, cocktail bars need to comply with the Michigan State Liquor Control requirements. Obviously, that applies in the form-based code district and outside of the form-based code district, and we want to make sure that that's captured everywhere. So those use standards almost always would apply in both. If there's an exception, we can call it If there's an exception, we can call it out in the ordinance. Using consistent terminology, so this section of the ordinance often references both major thoroughfares and primary streets. But using them interchangeably, we need to understand which is the correct term. And we want to review the definitions that are in the ordinance for all of the uses. I, I apologize, I skipped ahead. So we're going to identify discrepancies in the ordinance. Right now, auto wash establishments have different, there's standards for auto wash establishments in two different sections of the ordinance, and each describes a different number of cars as the required number for vehicle waiting. And we want to make sure that the use standards aren't more permissive than the district requirements. For example, residential buildings in B1, B2, and B3 are based on floor area ratio, yards based, and off-street parking for their lot minimums. However, this could result in a lot minimum that's smaller than the lot minimum required for that district. So we want to make sure that the use standards themselves don't exceed what is permissible in the underlying, the district, especially when those use standards are specifically called out or aligned with specific districts in the zoning ordinance. Some other recommendations. So we want to review auto-oriented uses and make sure things like circulation and pedestrian access is, you know, not creating conflicts. One example is with car washes. You might want to require that vacuums have to be in the rear or the side yard. We might want to require a bypass lane for vehicles to be able to exit waiting. Cemeteries, there's a fence requirement, but you might want to make sure, at least in the front yard, that that's a decorative fence or an iron fence that has opacity. For home occupations, there's some additional regulations that you might want to consider, such as the number of employees, the number of cars parked on site, the amount of space within the home that the home occupation may take up. Off-street parking A, this was a unique use in the Saginaw ordinance. We're not sure if we really see a strong reason for it. It really describes an off-street parking lot independent of any structures. There's other regulations that oversee parking, and we're not sure if this is needed to continue. But we look forward to talking to you guys more about this and learning about the history of off-street parking A. Private parks, country clubs, golf courses, and driving ranges. You might want to note that when allowed in a residential district, if they are or are not allowed to have some sort of accessory restaurant, because obviously those uses aren't usually allowed in residential. Wireless communication facilities, we're going to review for consistency with statute. Solar energy systems, in 2023, the legislature passed a new bill giving state preemption over utility-scale solar projects. These are really big solar projects. So almost all of the solar projects that would come before, or come in front of the city of Saginaw are going to be ones that can be regulated under the zoning ordinance. However, just being mindful of that new state preemption and exploring whether anything needs to be added into the ordinance for that. And then for marijuana, just looking at, some of the sections of the marijuana ordinance pertain more to the general code licensing rather than the zoning ordinance part of it. And so just kind of looking at if there's opportunities to relocate some sections of that. Site standards. So just generally, clear and easy navigation will ensure that these standards are not overlooked. So I think having them hidden in different places of the ordinance can be really problematic and difficult during a plan review. So we look forward to, as a part of the clear zoning update, when you go to that two-page spread, all of the site standards relevant to the district that you're in will be linked right there, and you know that you have to go look at them and find out if they apply to whatever you're developing. As far as parking goes, we recommend that the city look into flexibility and waivers, reviewing minimums, and considering maximums. EV charging stations is something that a lot of communities have been turning to recently, or at least requiring some sort of conduit is installed to prepare for future EV charging stations. And looking at drive-throughs. Another trend we've been seeing, especially since COVID, is the need for waiting spaces in addition to drive-through spaces. And this is more fast-food restaurants, drive-throughs, et cetera. We don't recommend altering your parking count to accommodate those kinds of spaces, but often reserving them or designating them on a site is necessary because you have people who are moving in and out very quickly. Signs. So as Andy noted, there was a recent Supreme Court case in Reed versus Gilbert where they established that communities must follow content-neutral sign ordinances, meaning that we can't regulate what the content that goes on a sign. And a lot of sign ordinances do that. So we have to review the ordinance and make sure that it's acceptable under the Reed versus Gilbert standards. This is particularly problematic, I think, with a lot of temporary sign ordinances. We'll take a close look at those. Lighting. So we're going to review the outdoor lighting standards to make sure that it's minimizing impact on surrounding residential and any other, any opportunities to make improvements there. As far as landscaping goes, consolidating the standards to a single section, reviewing the species list, including maintenance requirements, and considering additional screening or screening options. One suggestion we had is there's a few references to burms, but you can't use a berm as a screening alternative. So that might be something to add into the ordinance. Other site standards to consider, trash enclosures. So requiring something to corral waste receptacles in is often very helpful with litter and issues like that on the site. And also visual issues in aesthetics. Vision clearance, this was interesting. The vision clearance provisions in Saginaw's ordinance are actually in the general code in the nuisance section. And they require a substantially larger vision clearance triangle than most ordinances that we work with. And this is the measure from each corner. And then you go across the hypotenuse and anything with, built within that area needs to be of a certain height so that it doesn't serve as an obstruction for vehicles or oncoming, vehicles and oncoming pedestrians. In Saginaw, that length was 60 feet, which is much, much larger than standard, which is generally 25 feet or 30 feet. Fences. So I, I can't recall our recommendation for fences, but we're going to take a look at the fence regulations and identify any improvements that are needed. I did that somehow. Pretty far ahead of here, but I'll get there. Sorry about that. All right. So outdoor storage, some additional regulations to ensure that outdoor storage isn't a nuisance for surrounding properties. Pedestrian circulation, looking at opportunities to improve pedestrian circulation within a site, and design requirements. So although these are the requirements that don't apply to the form-based districts, considering design standards that maybe will help with overall aesthetics and general appearance in other districts as well. So now we're moving into the development procedures, administration, and enforcement. So I kind of lumped these last two sections of the ordinance together, but these are the processes that we do together for the most part. So non-conformities. We recommended adding criteria for what constitutes cessation of a use. There is some Michigan case law where simply abandoning or no longer using a structure doesn't necessarily qualify as ceasing a use for removing somebody's non-conforming status. And so we want to make sure that there are review standards that actually determine the intent to abandon, which is the, that's the kind of, the bar needed in order to revoke that non-conforming status. Clarify non-conforming use changes and review standards for determining equally or less appropriate uses. So in your ordinance, you do allow non-conforming use changes to a use that is equally or less appropriate than the previous non-conforming use. I think the ordinance should describe who makes that determination and also provide some review standards such as traffic, affluent, things like that that would help indicate intensity of a use or whether or not something is more or less compatible. Amendments. Noticing requirements should be consistent with the Motion and Zoning Enabling Act. Right now, so if there is a map amendment, notices need to be distributed to all residents within 300 feet of the subject property. That's in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. We want to make sure that that's followed at all times. It's not in the Saginaw zoning ordinance. We want to make sure that that gets in there. And also consider adding review standards. You'll see this comment a few times in here. Review standards are really guidelines that help the Planning Commission with their decision-making. So when it comes to these processes, having those guidelines in place, ensuring that things, that decision-making is aligned with public health, safety, and welfare, as well as the master plan, will ensure that decision-making is both consistent and founded on, rests on a sound foundation of what's in the ordinance. Performance guarantees, sorry. So in the performance guarantee section, we just want to, we found that the language wasn't entirely clear as to whether the engineer or Planning Commission ultimately approves the estimate of the performance guarantees. So we want to clarify that language. For special land uses, we want, we think the ordinance should include some guidance on how to set conditions to ensure that they're not arbitrary and capricious. And that would also be those review standards. For the BAZ, some of the special exemptions could be converted to Planning Commission waivers instead. And so we could have discussions about that. Have discussions about the variance review process and those review standards as well. And also include a note about special land uses and PUDs in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, unless it's specifically called out in the ordinance that PUDs and special land uses can get exceptions from the Board of Appeals on Zoning. They are not allowed to. And so that exception isn't granted in the ordinance, but then it should probably be called out that a PUD and a special land use cannot go to a BAZ for an exception on a condition that was granted to preserve the Zoning Enabling Act and ensure consistency with statute. For HDC, so we, it's somewhat unique that the HDC regulations are in the zoning ordinance, and we'd like to explore and discuss that further with the city. And also considering administrative authority for some minor amendments. So right now, everything has to go to HDC. If you're maybe adding an exterior staircase or something like that, perhaps that could be reviewed administratively. For site plan review, matters of interpretation on minor amendments. So there's a section where there, if there's an interpretation issue in administrative site plan, they're referred to the Planning Commission. However, the Planning Commission is not the body that is tasked with making interpretations under the Zoning Enabling Act. So we recommend referring them instead to the Board of Appeals on Zoning. Special land uses should only be reviewed administratively when changes do not affect conditions of approval. This is something that we can look into. But there's an administrative review process, and we just want to make sure that any changes affecting a condition set by the Planning Commission can be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And reviewing the required information for site plan review submittals. So we'll review that application. So as far as, that concludes the zoning ordinance audit. But as I mentioned before, you guys will get a copy of the report shortly, and it will go through these issues in more depth. And I look forward to hearing your thoughts and feedback as we go through this process. At the end of the, at the end of the zoning ordinance audit, there is an area for commissioners to describe the priority level of each item with a scale of one to five, with five being highest priority. I think maybe a one is we don't even want to touch it, and a three is a little neutral. After we're done with that, what we have here is kind of our priorities, our action priority matrix is what we call it. We look at the impact of different items and the effort required. The impact is going to be based on those prioritization items, and then a staff will determine kind of where the effort is, and we'll see where each of the zoning ordinance items lie in that matrix. So the items that are going to be high-impact and low-effort, those are the number one. Those are easy, those are low-hanging fruit, we can get those done quickly. The high-impact, high-effort, we want to get those. We want to make sure they're included, but we know they're going to take a little bit more work. It's those threes and those fours that are kind of at the bottom of our priority list. So with that, I'm going to quickly go through our scope of work, and then we'll wrap up there. So the timeline, we're starting here with the kickoff and the zoning ordinance audit. So we'll have that to you guys shortly. And then we're going to move into our public engagement. So we are going to start convening with the steering committee every three weeks to talk about the ongoing progress of the zoning ordinance audit. And we will hold three public workshops that are topic-focused to discuss different, either zoning corridors, areas of interest, or specific sections of the ordinance with members of the public. We'll work on the update illustrations and draft zoning map and then convert everything into that clear zoning format that we discussed earlier. We're going to be holding an open house at the end of the zoning ordinance update to go through all the changes with the public and share information on the new ordinance. At the end of the, at the end of the, at the end of the process, we'll go through the public hearing and adoption process with the city to make sure that the new ordinance gets approved. So for public participation, we do have a community survey, and a draft survey was provided to all of you tonight. We hope to get that out for distribution shortly. And I believe it was just provided, sorry. And we're going to be focusing on the readability, navigability, and implementation of the master plan. So I think a lot of the policy items are really figured out when we did the master plan. And this is more honing in on what are the issues with the zoning ordinance? What are those technical issues? What are those functional issues? And how can we approve, improve them, and what do we need to do to fix them? We will be launching a website, so we'll have that out to you when we have the audit out to you. Hosting the workshops and hosting the open house. And so this is kind of our timeline, it's a one-year timeline. And we will be moving into the next phase with the, with the public engagement shortly. And I believe that concludes everything. I know that was a ton of information. I'm happy to answer any questions, and same with Andy. And we're really looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much for your presentation, both. I have a couple of questions, but other commissioners would like to ask anything, I'll save mine. Any questions? I had two things that came to mind. Is this zoning review process, is that part of our redevelopment-ready city certification? Do we do this as part of that?
They have not identified that we needed to rewrite our ordinance, but we have done updates. It is, we will be in compliance for sure with this. This is just one of the regular things that needs to be updated.
And the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. I'm a little familiar with state legislation. Is this like the original act and then it gets amended for 75, 100 years?
Yep, so we're on the 2008 act right now.
Okay, and that is amendments to what is? Okay, and that is amendments to whatever is the original, or a totally new one?
The state did a complete rewrite.
They did a complete rewrite.
Of the zoning code, state zoning code, if you will, in 2007, 2008.
Okay.
And there have been amendments to that statute.
But still.
But that is, that is the governing document for zoning.
Yeah, I know we have a number of acts that relate to things. The original was written in the 50s, and it just keeps getting amended. I'm not sure if it's addressed directly, but do you have anything about how a zoning ordinance relates to building codes? Because I know in an older city like Saginaw, a lot of things that come to the Board of Appeals on Zoning relates to, I have a lot that doesn't meet any of the minimums for the type of use it has, or that I want to continue. So is there any direct relationship, or how's that?
So I think one of the things we're going to do as a part of the review is go through all of your past cases that you've had at the Board of Appeals on Zoning, and look at things that have been common issues for variances that might have come up as, they're not unique, the BAZ should be for unique circumstances, right? And so if we have things that are coming up over and over and over again, because of conflict with building code especially, we want to resolve those issues.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add on to that, too, a lot of times, too, we look at standards that building code already regulates. So if building code is actually going to regulate, like, room size for the dwelling unit, a lot of times we see no need to do that, because that's already been identified in the building code, and they're looking at it from a life-safety perspective. So, you know, zoning can go further if zoning wants to, but a lot of times we look at trying to make sure that, you know, if it's regulated in building code, perhaps zoning stays out of it.
Right.
So.
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Can you, okay, I know that you're doing this audit. Did we request an audit, or is this just something that was time to do? We requested it.
It was part of the...
Listen, we do so much, I sit on so many boards, I apologize. So with that being said, how often, after we do this review, will we need to update? Because I said the same thing a long time ago about our master plan. I don't want it to sit on the shelf. So is this going to be, I hear you saying you're going to do these community groups, is this also going to be a way of us making sure that we stay up with the zone code?
I, I think so. I think that, so, so obviously that responsibility doesn't fall on us after we leave, but we're going to be doing a rewrite that will put you in a really good position to have clear language and easy, an easy framework for future amendments. I think that having the clear zoning in place does help people out, because it doesn't make it so complicated. When you have to make one change, you don't have to make 30 different changes to 20 different cross-reference sections. And for that reason, it's easier to kind of get through those amendments and make the progress that you need. You need less legal review and things like that when you're making changes, because it's, it's not as complicated anymore. So I think ultimately, just having more organized, straightforward, streamlined ordinance will make, not only are we going to get through a lot of changes together through this process, but even after we leave, you're right, the zoning ordinance is a living document. It shouldn't just sit on a shelf. There's always going to be changes to state law, there's always going to be changes in your master plan that might affect the way that you guys want to regulate things. So having a clean framework to do that will position you to be successful.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah.
Thank you. Not so much of a question, but just a lot of notes that I was taking as you were going through that, just so, some food for thought as we go through this process. I'm excited about it as well. You talked about home restaurants, that's something that really got me excited. I'm in a lot of cities where they have that opportunity, they take an old home, turn it into a restaurant, or even in other neighborhoods. On-street parking is something that we need to take a look at. We are in a city now where we have families that live in the city with multiple kids that drive, so they might have four cars. I think that's an important piece that is definitely a buzz in the neighborhood, definitely a buzz in social media, because people are getting tickets for it. So I think we can establish some times of the year when we can and we can't. I know we live in a snow state, so that would be something that we take a look at. Trash, you know, you talked about the outside trash and boxes around them, I think it's fantastic, because we do, I do see a problem with that in the city. The other thing, too, as you mentioned, the Historic District Commission, which I used to sit on before city council, there is a section of their ordinance that they have to satisfy shipful with, that's their preservation guidelines, that does give them that opportunity to give staff certain authority to do certain things, so pull that, and that should give some, some stuff there. I'm sure Cassie can help you out with that. Then also, too, and especially in my neighborhood, because I know my neighborhood, the Cathedral District is somewhere where we're starting, we're looking at different mixed-use neighborhoods there, and also really pay attention to multi-units, on what can be actually done with those homes, because right now it's still R1, R2, and I have some grave concerns with some of my R2 pieces of the neighborhood right now that didn't get rezoned to R1, especially some significant homes. Thanks. That's it.
Other commissioners? Mr. Faust, did you have a question? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much for your time. Really looking forward to working with you guys.
Great stuff.
Our last item on the agenda under new business is D, proposed short-term rental ordinance.
So speaking of keeping up to date on zoning, I provided this to you for you to take a look at. We will bring it back to you next month, probably have a public hearing during that time. And at this point, alls I need you to do is go through it and see if there's any proposed changes or issues that you may have. I've already received a few comments from one of the commissioners already on it, so just take a look at the wording and let me know what you think. Unless you want me to read the whole ordinance tonight.
I don't think so. Are there any immediate comments anyone wanted to make?
No.
All right, then I think we will take this home for our homework, and it will be on our agenda for the next meeting. At this time, we arrive at public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment on any issues either before the mission today, or that are commission business? Yes?
Yes. First, I want to make sure it's okay to bring up something that was tabled or postponed about the food court?
Yes, no problem at all.
Oh, okay. My name is Tom Mudd. I live on Hoyt Avenue on the east side of the river. I am the head of the Historic Preservation Society, as well as the manager of the Kushway House, and I'm speaking also for the Women's National Farm and Garden, who work so hard with their dirty knees and dirty hands in all of the beautification of our site. The proposed food court, I saw the site plan for that three days ago. I knew about the court, because it was on the internet, and I got calls from Women's National Farm and Garden, wondering whether or not this new grocery store would impact the Kushway House, and the work that they've done around the Kushway House. The Kushway House has been there for 20 years. It's a community treasure. In Detroit, they talk big about the General Grant Home, which is slightly older than the Kushway House, that has been moved from the fairgrounds in Detroit to Fort Street under restoration for millions of dollars. We pulled it off for so much less than that. The, our neighbor, the Big Brothers Big Sisters, was a good neighbor, a quiet neighbor. The building that they were in did not overshadow the Kushway Home site, but the new proposed, looking at the site plan for the, for the food mart, it definitely overshadows what was there before. It's glitzy, it's modern, and it takes away from the peacefulness and the, I would guess, kind of a somber environment that the home had for two decades, two decades since it was moved across the river, in an almost impossible project that's hard to believe we ever pulled it off. So I have other concerns about this, about this project. It would set a precedent. Our parks are for education, recreation, culture, and historic aspects, physical fitness, et cetera. They're not for a grocery store. It would set a horrible precedent to have that business there. It's a wonderful thing for people to eat properly, but that's not the place to put something like that. And I have much more to say than three minutes, but one thing, one thing that really hits me is at the very end on the internet, you read where it says, "We need volunteers, we need this, we need this, we need this, we need this, we need this." I see some problems ahead for this. I see too many moving parts for this project, too many things that have to be done. So I would hope, I would hope that the planning commission take a very careful look at this. The first thing I thought of when I was contacted by several members of the Women's National Farm and Garden was, they're going to put a grocery store in a park? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to comment this evening? Do we have anything under old business? Anything, nothing tabled from previous meetings? I believe the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. It's been moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned.